Good evening and welcome to the Hanson Board of Selectmen meeting for April 14th, 2020. This is Laura Kemet, the Chair. Please permit me to confirm that all members are present and can hear me. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Matt Dyer.
Here.
Kenny Mitchell.
Here.
Jim Hickey.
Here.
And Wes Bluff.
Here.
And Greer and John?
We're here.
Yeah.
Okay, great. This is an open meeting of the Hanson Board of Selectmen being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth that was declared as a result of COVID-19. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless their participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Hanson Board of Selectmen is convening by go-to-meeting teleconference as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. This meeting is also being recorded by Whitman-Hanson Cable Access. And we're now going to turn to the first item on the agenda. And before we do, just a couple of ground rules. As each topic is being discussed, I'll go around each of the members to see if they have any comment, questions, or motions. And while we're having this meeting, if you could mute your phone while you're not speaking and speak as clearly as possible when you do speak to aid Greer in keeping accurate minutes. And finally, each vote that we take in this meeting will be conducted by roll-call vote. If you can join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, that would be great. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." And before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to start by thanking our police, fire, water, dispatch, and highway departments for all their extremely hard work in the last couple of days battling the downed trees and the wires that are all over town. Please know that we're grateful for all that you do, as are all the citizens of Hanson, and we thank you. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Bluff. Mr. Bluff, may I impose upon you to possibly do the announcement a little bit later in the agenda?
Sure.
Okay, great. Just because I'm trying to be sensitive to Mr. Mitchell and his need to get back to work tonight. So with that, I'm going to take a couple of items out of order. We're going to start with discussing the town's Facebook page. And we've been discussing social media or engaging citizens for three years now. The past town administrator and our past town administrator were working on a Facebook page, and Mr. Stanbrook picked it up from them. The proposal on the table is very, very simple one. Ryan has been working, Ryan McGonigal, our IT person, has been working on linking the town website so that when a update is made to the website, it would post to the town Facebook if we choose. It doesn't have to be everything that we put on there. But the types of items would include selectmen's agendas, town meeting notices, town meeting warrants, public hearings, information that maybe our town clerk, Beth Sloan, would have regarding early voting, voting registration, voting locations, and not the least of which would be state of emergency information. The only people that would be permitted to post would be the town administrator and the executive assistant. The commenting would be turned off, but information about who to contact would be included on the Facebook page. And the reason that this has come up is because time and time again, we find that we struggle with quarts for town meetings time and time again. We have openings on boards and committees that go unfilled. And during storms and other emergencies like the one we're in, Hanson residents need to hear from Hanson Town Hall, and they need information and assurances, and they need greater transparency. This has come up time and time again. So I think last week, we had had a brief discussion about it, but I thought I would kind of do a round robin, get everybody's thoughts, and then move to a motion. So with that, Mr. Dyer, thoughts, comments, concerns?
Sure. My thoughts on a Facebook page for the town, I think that, as you said, previous chair, is to make sure that we get information out there. And right now, the public is on social media. They're not necessarily reading the newspaper these days or even going to our town website. So I think if it can automatically update itself when someone posts something into the town website that it automatically posts into Facebook, I'm okay with that. I just don't want to see a valuable time for our town administrator or executive assistant to have to go in and post things. Maybe one suggestion would be as well is to create a new appointed position where we could appoint a citizen at large or two citizens at large to be able to go in and post anything that is related. Right now, we have an unofficial Town of Hanson Twitter page, and whoever's running it does a great job, but it's not an official page. And I think that goes to show that we could have an appointed person or two to be able to to get the information out there. I think getting information out there is very important, and from a very reliable space. So that's where I think, as long as our town administrator's not going to have to spend time posting on it or whatever, I'm okay with it, and maybe open it up to a citizen at large.
Okay. Mr. Mitchell?
Okay, so my only concern with the Facebook page was the comment section, where if you post something, that people have the ability to come in and comment and go back and forth, because I think that would take up a lot of time. So if you're saying that we have, and I don't know anything about Facebook, I apologize. I don't have a Facebook page because I just don't have any time. But if you're saying we have the ability to be able to shut that off, then I think I'd be okay with it. And I do agree with Matt. You know, the town administrator doesn't have a lot of extra time, so that's certainly a concern of mine. But if you can set it up so whatever you post on the town website, you know, and then goes to the Facebook page for informational reasons, then I think I would be fine with that, as long as, again, we can shut that section off.
Yeah, we did check, well, it's physically possible to shut it off. And we also checked with town council to see if we were permitted to do that. And she not only said we were permitted, but she strongly suggested that we do that. Because if you don't turn off commenting, then you get into being judge and jury about which comments you're going to keep and which ones you're not, and then you're getting into some freedom of speech issues. And really, this isn't meant to be a forum for people to be discussing things. It's a forum for information and then driving people back to the website to take a look at the website. So hopefully that addresses your concerns. Mr. Hickey?
Whoop, there we go. I don't think I can add anything else that Matt and Kenny haven't already said. A time concern with John, especially right now with the situations that he's dealing with. You know, we might want to put this on hold and not just, you know, because we're doing this with everybody sitting in their own house, except for Kenny, who's in someone's backyard, but with the other situations that John has been working on lately with the regional school. And like I said, I mean, I really can't add much more than Kenny and Matt have already said.
Okay. Mr. Bluff?
And I think everyone already knows my views from last week. I fear that, first of all, it's going to make an uneven playing field. If you're on Facebook, you're going to keep being notified about what's going on in town. If you're not on Facebook, you don't get that notification, and somewhere down the road, it's going to bite us when, for some hearing or something, someone says, "Well, I don't have Facebook, so I was never notified." And I see that as happening. I think having a website that is functional, up-to-date, user-friendly, if that's what Ryan and John are working on, just a website, that everybody in town who has access to Wi-Fi, and that, of course, is an issue too, but at least everyone who has access, then can go to the website if they so choose and find out what's happening. And then they're not put in a disadvantage by not being notified as to what's going on. As far as I'm concerned, Laura, you and I, I mean, we both said, you and I like Facebook. I think the other three are not on Facebook. But so the two people who like it, we have a split decision here. I just think that Facebook is a huge amount of fake news, period. And while the town website is not going to be fake news, it's still, we're putting ourselves in a position where, I don't know, if Mark Zuckerberg wants to sell my data, I'm not putting anything out there that is of interest to me. But the town putting out data that could be used by someone else, this raises ethical concerns for me. I don't like it. There, that's my spiel.
Okay, I'm not sure we're suggesting putting any data out there. We're just talking about posting selectmen's meetings, town warrants. You know, I mean, time to time again, we're struggling with trying to get people to sign up for boards and committees. And I think part of the problem is, yeah, people are busy. But part of the problem is, I just don't think people know what's going on. And I just see this as just another way of, yeah, the website, our meetings, you know, whatever way we need to try to reach people, like Matt said, Twitter account, which we've got to figure out who's got that account, you know, the town sign, whatever. You know, by hook or by crook, wherever people are, the newspaper, which most people aren't reading anymore. I just feel like, you know, and I'm not sure it's an uneven playing field to me. It's just like, it's just another way, like, a lot of people are out there, and particularly the people that I think we really need to engage more to have come to town meetings. I mean, I'm sick and tired of going to town meetings where we've got to text all of our friends to make sure we get a quorum. You know, not even friends, just people we know. But anyway, all right, well, I think everybody's kind of gotten their points across. I would defer to John in terms of when he would be doing this or how he would be doing it, you know, what frequency or whatever. But with that, I'll move to the vote. Do I hear a motion to move forward with putting the town Facebook page up?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to create an official Facebook page that is run by an appointed position to be determined moving forward.
The problem with that is, Matt, is that we're going to hamstring, and that means John won't be able to use it and Greer won't be able to use it now if it's predicated upon, yes?
I don't think it would hamstring us. I think that it will create a position where someone will be able to post whatever it may be. But if John or Greer needs to get on there, they're going to have the passwords to this to be able to get on there to post anything last minute or whatever it may be. But I'm just hoping that by having an appointed position or two, that it will take off the burden of running a Facebook page off of someone that already has a lot of stuff on their plate.
Okay, so would you permit me to break that motion down into two motions? One is to create the Facebook page, and the other is to, I don't want to call it a committee, but like, guess, a little committee, like an outreach committee or engagement committee or whatever it is comprised of two citizens at large? Is that what you're kind of saying?
Yep, and I wanted to keep it as one motion, if I may, just because I think that that's the way forward, is by creating a committee of two to be able to run the majority of it. And then if we have to get in there last minute to post something, it's there.
Okay, but just to be clear, Greer and John can still post, or just these two people can post?
Yep, yep. With the option of the town administrator and the executive assistant to be able to post as well.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion with just a quick comment when we get there.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes, the only thing I was going to say-
Oh, go ahead, Kenny.
The only thing I was going to say is, you know, we do have the ability, like what Mr. Bluff is concerned, you know, if it turns into something that's a disaster or something down the road, that we have the ability to take it down. You know, so I think that's something that, and I'm not saying that's going to happen, but, you know, if this turns painful in four or five months, then I want to have the ability to be able to put it on the agenda and be able to remove it if we had to.
Yep, that's a great point. Mr. Dyer, any further discussion?
The last thing I want to throw out there is I want to make sure that a memo goes out to everyone, to all the committees, just reminding them the rules of engagement of social media. Just because with social media, it's a whole different world with open law meetings. So for instance, if you have a five-person committee and three people like a post that goes out, that's violating the open committee law in some people's eyes. So I just want to make sure that a memo goes out to all the committees just reminding them of open meeting laws.
Yeah, I think, yeah, point well taken. Mr. Hickey, further discussion?
No, I'm pretty much set as long, my concern is that, you know, John can set it up, but I don't really like the idea of him having to run it.
Yeah, so I think maybe with Matt's, you know, two citizens at large, he really wouldn't need to run it. I mean, obviously, he's going to want to have some, I don't want to say oversight, but input or something, like some involvement to make sure that, you know, what's being put out there is what, you know, needs to be put out there. But yeah, we don't want to unduly burden him, gotcha. Mr. Bluff, any further discussion?
No, I know how I'm voting, thanks.
Okay, all right. So we've got a motion and a second, so we'll move to the vote and roll-call vote. Mr. Dyer? Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Hickey?
Nay.
Mr. Bluff?
Nay.
And Laura Kemet? Aye. Okay, so we're moving on to the Camp Kwani people being considered, how did we put this on here, determinative recreation staff are deemed essential. So when we met last week, we had a little bit of a discussion about it. And just so that you know, the way that we originally, John had originally made the determination about who was essential and who wasn't, was based on the initial governor's order. But there's been subsequent guidance, and there's been subsequent conversations with town council. And at the end of the day, town council has informed us that it's really up to the Board of Selectmen to make the determination on this, because there's just enough play in it that you could argue one way or the other. And something to think about is that right now, the folks that are up at Camp Kwani, the recreation director, the admin, and the caretakers are currently being paid. And they are, the recreation director and the admin are working from home, as many of the essential and non-essential personnel at Town Hall are doing. But the caretakers are not working there. And there are certainly a number of things that could be done, you know, while safely distancing from one another, but, you know, maintenance things and cleaning and, you know, building cabin, you know, cabin cleaning, building maintenance, all of that type of stuff. So John, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add to that discussion?
Yes, thank you. I spoke with town council Kate Federoff on this last Friday, I think it was Friday afternoon. And she initially said exactly what you said, that landscapers can be deemed essential by the governor's order if their work is essential to maintaining safety and sanitation or if the lack of maintenance would have long-term impacts. So I guess it would be to think about the caretakers as a group, and maybe the support staff as a group, and the recreation director as another group. If they were able to use proper hand washing and, you know, the usual social distancing techniques and all that, it could be, they could be deemed essential if the board so chose.
Okay. So with that, I'll just kind of do a round robin and get people's thoughts. Mr. Dyer?
I personally don't believe that there's much going on up there, that we do not need a staff up there. The only thing that I would recommend is that Billy comes up once a week just to walk the camp, to make sure that there's no vandalism that has gone on. I know that we have the police officers up there just doing a quick cruise around, but I think that Billy might be able just to take a quick look. But other than that, I do not see any reason for staff to be up there, especially when it comes to safety. If you have someone in the north end and something happens to them, but they're by themselves, what happens then? So I think, as I said last week, the only reason why mass VCR park supervisors are there is just to be there for first responders, not necessarily to clean bathrooms or anything like that as those facilities are closed. So with that being said, I don't think that we'd need anyone up at the camp at this time.
Okay. Mr. Mitchell?
I mean, I'm kind of on the fence. I think either everybody should be working or everybody should be, you know, staying home. You know, last week, you know, with Matt said, I kind of based my decision off kind of what Matt said, because honestly, I didn't give it that much thought. But like I said, I can go either way on this. I either think everybody should be working or they shouldn't be working. So I know that really doesn't help you, but I'm on the fence.
Okay, fair enough. Mr. Hickey?
Thanks, Laura. I actually called the camp today. And the way their phone is set up, they can, a person can leave their name, phone number, and Dory or Billy would get back to them. They also give their email address so that if a person wanted to email them, they could. I also had a conversation with Greer today about that, and Dory has already brought up one-day liquor license. So just because the camp is closed, weddings and other functions are still being planned for next year. And with the camp being closed, I do not see a need for the caretakers to be up there. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Bluff?
No, not essential, that's my votes.
Okay, all right. So I think everybody kind of feels the same. I just wanted to make sure that we were armed with Kate's opinion, and, you know, and I guess we are. So with that, John, can we, and I know you're representing Jean Sullivan tonight, go to the first item that we had on for New Business, which was discussion and possible vote to delay town tax due date? So when last, we spoke last week, there was some guidance that was issued about interest and penalties and all of that, and you needed to circle back with Jean to see what her thoughts were.
Yes, thank you. So I did sit down with the treasure collector, Jean Sullivan, over the past week several times, going over the guidance that was given to us by the Department of Revenue on the law that was passed last week. We did get some clarification on it. Some of the things that came up last week in our discussion, I just wanted to go over real quickly. I think Selectmen Dyer had talked about maybe posting a hardship case. He had an idea about going, whether you had a hardship or not, and going on a case-by-case basis. The Department of Revenue doesn't, and the change in the law does not allow that. It's either we grant the change in the due date or we don't. We can't, hardship cases, the things that Mr. Dyer was talking about just can't be done according to the new law. So that's a hard no. We can't limit the bills to being only real estate or personal property only, penalties and interest being waived. It's, we would have to waive all the penalties and interests on motor vehicle excise, on real estate tax, on personal property tax, and water bills issued after March 10th, 2020. So you can't say, well, okay, we'll waive real estate interest, but we won't waive motor vehicle. It's either all or nothing. Anything, any bill issued after March 10th, 2020, all or nothing. And we can't set a due date in between May 1st and June 30th to start charging interest. It's either we set the date at May 1st or we set the date at June 30th. So there's only one or the other. There's no gray area in between. So the three options that we have are to move the due date of, you know, all the bills from either May 1st to June 1st, and then interest and penalties would kick in after June 1st. So in essence, the town would lose one month's worth of interest. The other option is to keep the due date of May 1st, but no interest and fees would be applied until June 30th. And again, in the town's view, that would be a loss of May and June's interest. Or do nothing, and then keep it the way it normally is, which is May 1st is the due date, and interest and penalties begin after that date. And I had Ms. Sullivan run the interest and fees revenue that we received in fiscal year 19 for both May and June. May motor vehicle was 9,700, I'm going to round the numbers off, 9,700. Real estate and personal property was 7,900, and water was 16,40. And then June was 5,800 for motor vehicle, 6,200 for real estate and personal property, and 800 for water. So a total of, May interest and penalties collected last year were 19,329, and June was 12,0890. So the total there is 32,200, again rounding the numbers off. So that's the kind of numbers we're talking about, and those are our options based on going through what we needed to do over the last week.
Okay. So why don't we have a little bit of a discussion? Mr. Dyer, thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, John, here's a finance question for you. Do you think that postponing payments to the later date would be detrimental to the financial health of the town?
No, I don't believe so. It's significant money, $32,000 if you total the May and June together, but it's not, you know, break the bank, there's no way we can recover money. It's, you know, again, May is 19,000 and June is 12,000. So I mean, it's real money, but it's not, you know, need to lay people off money, I don't think.
Right. And with that being said, we're not forgiving, or we're not forgiving these amounts owed, we're just pushing these dates, pushing the due date off, correct?
Yes, that's correct. That's a good point, is that, and something I didn't mention is, if you have a 2017 motor vehicle excise tax due, that interest and penalties are not being waived. It's only bills that have been, that were issued after the date, which was March 10th. So you had to have, the bill must, had to have been sent out to you after March 10th. So obviously, 2017 motor vehicle got sent out much earlier than that. We're still collecting the penalties and interest on that money. And again, with the amounts that I read off, some of those, you know, some of that excise could have been for prior years. We don't have it broken down, interest and penalties by year. So it's tough to say what the amount was of penalties and interest from May and June. That's the maximum, is what the numbers I read, if that makes sense.
But also, Matt, good point that we're not wa, you know, we're not waiving past bills. We're also not waiving the current bill. We're just talking about waiving, you know, penalties and interest. We're just talking about waiving ta, you know, penalties and interest for the current bill.
Correct.
Yep. So with, with that being said, I think we need to have the interest of all our people at heart right at the moment, whether or not that they can afford it or not. I think we have to look out for the little guy that may not be able to, um, afford that bill because they were laid off, uh, from their job at this time and, um, and help them out where we can. And that's what position we are in. We're here to serve the public and if we can help someone out at these, uh, hard times, let's do it. Let's push it off to the later date.
Okay. Um, all right. Thank you. Mr. Mitchell?
I'd like to know from John, did the treasure collector, did she give an opinion of whether or not we should do this or not?
Uh, she did. She, uh, and I, I agree with her. I think it would be the, the first option of moving the, um, the due date from May 1 to June 1 and just losing the one-month interest. And, uh, and again, that's, we're acting in the town's best interest. I know that, that's not, sometimes it should be, uh, but not necessarily in the resident's best interest, but that would be in the town's best interest if we were going to, if we were going to try to give some sort of relief, it would be moving the date.
Okay. And you think we should do that, John?
Yes, I agree with her.
Okay.
Okay. Um, then I would support that.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Hickey?
Um, yeah, I think, uh, it's a no-brainer that we have to do this, but I, I do think we're being handcuffed, um, by the Commonwealth that, um, we can only move the date. Uh, my hope would be that, um, the governor takes a serious look at this and possibly, uh, changes what's on the book, but, uh, we definitely have to move the date back.
Okay. And Mr. Boss?
All right, yeah, I agree with the date.
Okay. All right. So I will entertain a motion, uh, to, it sounds like, I, I don't want to put a motion in somebody's mouth, but it sounds like universally everybody is on board with what John and Jean are both suggesting, which is to move the date, due date to June 1st. Um, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
And so moved. Sorry, Matt. Second, Kenny.
Okay. Um, I will, uh, do a roll call vote. Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mr. Boss?
Aye.
And Ms. Kement? Yes. Aye. Um, okay, great. Um, so do you have everything that you need from us, John, to move forward with Jean on that?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for all of that hard work and, and bringing that over the line. Um, next up is Selectman's appointment to the 200th Anniversary Committee. Uh, we need to have a member of the Board of Selectmen, um, appointed to that committee. Um, I've been on it for, well, really since the beginning, um, and, um, I am finding that with the regional agreement and other items taking up time, uh, that I think it might be best if somebody else did, um, took up this particular opening. So... Sorry, Mr. Boss?
I will volunteer if anyone else is interested, that's fine too, but I'll volunteer.
Okay, great. Is there anybody who wants to arm us or Mr. Boss for that position?
I'd like to nominate, uh, Selectman Boss for the positions of the, um, appointment to the 200th Anniversary Committee.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, great. Uh, roll call vote. Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mr. Boss?
Aye.
And Ms. Kement? A resounding aye. Thank you very much, Mr. Boss. Um, discuss adding preface to the 2019 report. Um, as you guys know, the annual report, it's a snapshot in town, time of where the town stands at a particular moment in time. But I was talking to Greer last week and, um, and it seemed to me as though it might seem weird to people 20 years from now or even next year that we didn't mention the pandemic anywhere in the annual report. And I don't want to redo the annual report, but I thought it might be nice to just put some acknowledgement in there that at the time that this was written, we hadn't yet been hit with the pandemic, but, uh, that we subsequently have been and that we, we have gratitude, uh, for our first responders and the other folks that are going out there every day to make it happen and keep things going, um, just so that people don't say, are these guys just completely out of it? They didn't mention the, you know, the, uh, COVID-19 pandemic? Um, and so I just, I don't know that we necessarily need a vote. I just kind of wanted to discuss it and see if you guys agree that just a very, a brief letter, one or two paragraphs, um, at the beginning of the town report to acknowledge that details will be forthcoming in next year's town annual, um, town report, but, uh, this year we just wanted to acknowledge that a thing happened. Um, Mr. Dyer, thoughts?
Yep, I think that'd be great. Um, and as long as we make sure that we include everyone, including the, the baggers at the grocery store and, uh, those that made it happen.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mitchell? We may have lost Mr. Mitchell because he was on the job. Um, Mr. Hickey?
Uh, great idea. I absolutely agree.
Okay, great. Mr. Boss?
Mr. Boss, this is a good idea, too. I was just curious who's writing it.
Oh, I think it would be, I mean, it would, I think probably be Mr. Stanbrook, um, although I had written the Board of Selectmen piece and if Mr. Stanbrook is overwhelmed, I certainly can take a crack at this and pass it by you guys. Um, but I, I, I think, Mr. Stanbrook, you kind of already had something in mind anyway, right?
I do have something as a first draft that I can send out, um, and maybe for the, for the next meeting, we could approve it or something like that.
Okay.
As long as there's no deliberation over it.
Okay. All right. That sounds great. Thank you for taking the first crack at it. Um, and if you could just circulate it after this meeting, that would be great. Uh, we have no requests, no appointments or resignations. Uh, Mr. Boss, could I impose upon you to, um, quickly go through our, um, public announcements in upcoming meetings?
You can. Here we go. New date for annual election, Saturday, June 27th, 2020. The state hasn't allowed for mail-in only early voting, which is basically absentee voting with no reason needed as to why you can't vote in person on election day. Nomination papers for the June 27th town election are now available at the town clerk's office for the following offices. Moderator for a three-year term, two selectmen for three-year terms, assessor for a three-year term, board of health for a three-year term, cemetery commissioner for a three-year term, planning board for a five-year term, planning board for a three-year term, Hanson Housing Authority for a five-year term, two trustees and public library for three-year terms, women Hanson Regional School District Committee pre-K to 12 for a three-year term, water commissioner for a three-year term. Please call the town clerk's office at 781-293-2772 or email townclerk@hanson-me.gov to set up appointments to take out papers. The last day to obtain nomination papers is Wednesday, May 6, 2020. The nomination papers must be returned to the town clerk's office by 5:00 PM Friday, May 8th. A minimum of 50 certified signatures of registered voters is necessary in order for candidates named to be placed on the ballot. Candidates so far, moderator Sean J. Keely, selectman Laura A. Fitzgerald-Kemmett, James and Hickey, Paul John Benigno, board of health Kevin L. Perkins, planning board five years, John F. Kemmett, planning board three years, Kevin D. Cohen, Hanson Housing Authority, Marilyn Cardale, trustee of public library Joseph F. Cap, Teresa M. Santalucia, water commissioner Michael J. Chinecki. We are still looking for someone to take out papers for assessor and women Hanson Regional School District. Volunteers are needed on the following committees. 200th Anniversary Conservation Commission regular and two associate members, council or council disabilities, economic developments, finance, highway building committee, historical commission, memorial, memorial day patriotic observance, memorial field trustees, master commission and zoning board alternate. Applications for appointment and info on the committee are available on the town website, Upcoming meetings, Tuesday, April 28th, Tuesday, May 5th, Tuesday, May 19th. All Board of Selectmen's meetings, I'm assuming at 6:00, unless we hear otherwise later. Thank you.
Are you guys still there?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, sorry, guys. Um, sorry, uh, thank you, Mr. Boss.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Um, so old, I was just going on and on, but I was on mute. Um, um, the, um, old business, uh, we're talking about regional school assessment matter. I'm not sure there's much to really discuss there. Uh, the school committee voted last week to really kind of push off the deci, decision about a budget and really move forward with the regional agreement committee, which is scheduled to meet tomorrow at 3:00. And, uh, guess more to report on that once we have that initial meeting, uh, but not, not much else on that. Um, with that, uh, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Stanbrook, for the town administrator's report.
Thank you very much. Um, so I think it was two meetings ago, uh, or maybe more than that now, but, um, you, you authorized me to sign for, uh, the warrants until May 1st, um, so it could keep town business rolling. And I was to give updates, uh, at every meeting thereafter of a wa, a warrant that I have signed. So I'm just going to go through them real quickly. So I signed the following warrants on behalf of the Board of Selectmen since the last meeting. I signed warrant 41 dated 4/9/20 for $2,532,931.27. That was a vendor warrant. And the major, uh, amounts on that very large number are $2,417,743 of the Whitman Regional, Whitman Hanson Regional School District's fourth quarter assessment. There was also a $41,663.35 new police cruiser on that warrant and also a $25,690.2-mile busing, fourth quarter assessment on that warrant. So those are the major things that were on that warrant. Uh, I signed another warrant dated 4/9, which is warrant number 41PR for $138,162.19, and that was a payroll warrant. I also di, uh, signed a, another, uh, warrant 41WH dated 4/9/2020, $25,704.64. Uh, and that was a withholding warrant, uh, the, again, those are, uh, from withholding, um, amounts from employees' payrolls. Um, also, uh, um, for new business, uh, I, I provided in your packet the, a third quarter fiscal year 20 articles list. Uh, the Town Administr, Administrator Special Act requires me to implement Selectmen-controlled town meeting articles and to provide written progress reports quarterly to the, to the board on the status and implementation of all prior town meeting votes. So I provided you that list of all the outstanding articles as of March 31st, 2020. Um, right now there are, uh, in fiscal year 20, there have been 84 active articles and real quickly, I, I, articles to me are the Department of Revenue's definition. An article is something that has been funded by, by some other source other than debt. Debt-funded articles are capital projects. So that's, that, that, that's how the terms that I'm using and what they mean, um, the, what the Department of Revenue uses. Um, so, uh, there are 84 active articles and the total was $1,842,307.93. Uh, six of the 84 articles that were, were active in fiscal year 20 have been completed so far, so there's 78 outstanding articles as of March 31st. Uh, five additional articles, uh, related to the fire department have been completed. Those balances can be reused for other purposes or other, uh, for other articles. And that's a total of $15,031.60. Um, again, you know, just giving highlights of the list that I gave you. Uh, 462,175.87 were town-related articles, and that includes the 15,000 that I just spoke about that have been completed. 702,018.11 are school-related articles, and those are both schools in Hanson and in the district as a whole. 179,398.60 are Community Preservation Act-related articles, um, and 479,669.58 are water-related articles and 19,045.77 are Camp Kawani Enterprise-related articles. Um, and just some, some, uh, things to remember when you're looking at this list, uh, of articles. Um, these are the articles that have, the amounts that have been paid as of March 31st. You know, so the things can, invoices can be in the pipeline, work could have been completed and we just haven't got the bills yet. Um, you know, it's, it's, it is a work in progress. It's, it's just a snapshot, but there could be more work. So you may look at the list and say, why aren't they moving on whatever article that, that you're looking at? They, it may already be completed, we just haven't got the bill yet. It could be one of those things where it's in the pipeline. Um, and then again, these are only the articles that were funded by something other than debt. Uh, articles that are funded by debt are called capital projects. I will be able to include them on the next quarterly review in June, as well as I'm going to have a progress report for each capital project and article. You'll, you'll know in June, um, you know, where we are on each one of them, uh, because I'll find out between now and June where we are on each one of them. Um, so, um, that's just the, the article list. Uh, again, uh, another thing that I'm required to do by the special act, the Town Administr, Town Administrator Special Act requires me to give you a monthly financial report to the board. Um, the town accountant Todd Hassett has been giving me those reports and I forward those on to you, uh, for every month since I've, uh, I, since I've been here. Um, and I will, I will be forwarding them on a monthly basis from now on. Um, I'd like to, if you could, just to hold any questions that you do have about those monthly financial reports until Mr. Hassett, uh, um, comes in on the April 28th, uh, agenda. We have him scheduled to do his normally, normal quarterly review, uh, and for the third quarter. So, uh, if you have any questions on that, if you could just hold them until April 28th and then ask him when he's on the call, that'd be fantastic. Um, and one other thing the special act requires me to do is to give you an update on all the outstanding legal matters, um, in the town. Uh, I will do that by the next meeting of the 28th, but again, that can't be a public document. Uh, it may contain personnel, uh, items, may contain u, union bargaining, it may contain health-related issues. Those things cannot be discussed in public session. So I, I will give you the list, but again, this is, that should not be a public document at all. It's just, but I'm, I'm trying to, to comply with the special act. Um, uh, in what happened, uh, I think this, this is within 48 hours. I, I didn't have it on here, but I, the, the town clerk gave me something that I had, I'd like to read to you just, um, it's about placing a ballot question for a proposition two and a half override. She had done the, uh, uh, Beth had done a, you know, the time, the dates back from our new dates of, uh, when we have to agree to do that. Yes, because the, um, you know, the law says, chapter 459, I think it's 21C, says that, um, you, to place a ballot question on the, on the annual town election, it has to be, you have to require, it has to be a written notice sent at least 35 days before the date. So I'm just going to read what, what the, uh, town clerk gave me, um, about, you know, with the new dates and plugged in. So placing a ballot question on the June 27th, 2020 annual town election would require a written notice of the question at least 35 days before the date of the election, and that would be May 23rd, 2020. The exact language must be used to properly place the question before the voters. Since May 23rd is a Saturday, the Selectmen would need to vote before that date so that a written notice can get to the town clerk by May 23rd. So I think we have the 28th as a meeting, April 28th. We have May 5th as a meeting. I don't have it in front of me. And May 19th, Greer? Yes?
I believe so.
So I think we have three more meetings. If that were the pleasure of the board to place an article, um, we would have three more meetings to talk about it. But I wanted to get, I wanted to get that out, I, I, if we were to do that. Um... get, I wanted to get that out, I, if we were to do that. And then just, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone working really hard, especially with the storm that, that came along in the last, what, the last day or so. I mean, we really had some real, really unprecedented winds. And, you know, the, the Highway Department, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Water, everyone's just working fantastically on this. They're doing, doing a great job anyway during the pan- pandemic, and, and I just want to make sure that, I'm, I hope I don't leave anybody out. People at the transfer station, people at Town Hall working from home, they're just doing a great job. But this particular, this storm had 70 mile an hour winds yesterday. That's, several of the people that may, that maybe listen to this may still have, be out of power. But you have to remember that national grid's responsible for maintaining and taking down trees near power lines, where they, you know, they have that right of way. And they have begun an aggressive project here in Hanson to take down trees along major routes. Eighty percent of the town did lose power, but there are five crews today in Hanson working on power restoration, and they'll continue working until, until they can get power up to everybody. But it's, you know, it's, it's, sometimes it's slow grinding work. So they're doing a great job, and, you know, good luck to them, and, you know, keep up the great work. So thank you very much.
Okay. Great. Thank you, John. With that, I will move to, well, first, I guess I'll do a round robin, make sure nobody had any questions about your update. Mr. Dyer?
Both, thank you, John and Greer.
Mr. Mitchell?
Hey, John. Great Town Administrator update. In my almost six years on the Board, I think that might be the first time that I've actually heard a financial report. So I appreciate that, and thank Greer as well.
Mr. Hickey?
Sorry about that, giggling. Kenny's absolutely right, but I just want to thank the two of you for the work you've done throughout the last month and a half going this way. I know it's been tough on everyone, so thanks.
Mr. Blas?
Ditto. Thank you, guys.
Okay, great. Thank you, John and Greer. With that, I will entertain a motion on the March 24th, 2020 minutes.
So moved.
This is Matt, second.
Okay. I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mr. Blas?
Aye.
And Ms. Kement, aye. I will, I believe that brings us to our adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, second, Jim Hickey.
Second, Kenny.
Thanks, Kenny, a little late.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mr. Blas?
Aye.
And Ms. Kement, aye. Thank you very much, and everybody stay safe.